Okay, meeting's ordered. Item number, meeting's been called to order. Item number two, at the commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda on June 18th, 2019. Commissioners have anything?
I have a question, and I'm actually trying to find it right now. Give me just one second. I noticed that there were two change orders on this that were pretty significant. Change order number four with similar construction for $235,700, which whenever you look at that, the original contract was $600,000, and then they revised it to $955,000. Now we've added $235,000. So, original contract of $623,000, we're up to $1,202,000. And then there's another one on here, I think it's...
It's 7.3? 7.3 sewer repairs, Luckinville?
Yes, or Luckinville. And it's significant also. And I was just curious, one, how did we go from a $300,000 project to over a million? Was that additional work? Was that just miscalculation?
No, it was additional work. And I thought I'd just let either Chris or Marali actually answer that for you.
Okay. Very good, thanks.
So, here is the 7.3 sewer point repair. Here is 81 and Fort Hall. And this is Mattress Place and Flamingo. That pipe is 1929 built, and it's a concrete pipe. That pipe is in like a collapsed, so we have to get that one pretty quick and fix it. So, that's the point repair. And also, this project is being bid. We have a unit prices, so it's changing the unit quantities.
Essentially, what it is to help even further explain it is, this particular one's for sanitary sewer point repairs. So, we do this annually to allow for where there's sewer line breaks in the city, we get unit prices. We bid that out, take the best unit price we get, which in this case is Luckinville. And then, all the sewer line breaks, we put those together and have them go do it. I believe this is for this year's point repairs? Because it started back in 2017, actually. The unit prices are from 2017, so... So, it's not really, on one hand, it's not really related to the original project. It's related because it's a sanitary sewer repair, but it wasn't within the scope of the original project. We're allowed under state law, if we get unit prices, that if we think those prices are still good, we don't have to bid it out again, we can change order. And in this case, we think it's in the best interest of the city to do that. It does make it look like it's a huge increase from the original amount, because it is. But in this case, I want to say this might be more than, if the sanitary sewer repairs from 17 were done, this is either the repairs from 18 or 19, or additional one we're adding, which is shown right here, I guess.
Yes, yes, sir. Okay.
So, I think that's the best explanation.
No, I understand. I just, it looked like a project they'd gone way over, is what it looked like on papers. That's why I was curious about that. But it is the unit price from 2017.
Yes. And it's based on unit price for the quantities at that time. We can bid it a lump sum, and if we do that, then there's a restriction on what we can change orders. So, those change orders are typically related more to the project. I think we have a 15% cap on what we can do that way. So, this allows us the flexibility, and I presume that the prices we think are good. So, that's why we're suggesting we change orders to...
Can't imagine the prices in 2019 are less than 17.
Well, additionally, with this sewer line being collapsed, we have to do pump repairs.
Yes.
And so...
This is faster.
Time is a blessing to us.
Okay, all right. Well, that's good. I was just curious. Some numbers jumped up pretty quick.
And the other one, I think, is the golf course?
This is another water line on Garfield. So, it's a dead end. We have a lot of dead end projects and dead end lines. It's going to provide fire clothes and circulate the water. This is also same thing. We have unit prices. We are changing the quantities on the unit price.
Okay. All right, that's fine. Thank you very much. I appreciate that clarification.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. It's a good catch and good reference. Appreciate it. Okay, anything else? Hearing none, we'll move to an update on the Call Lake Water Supply Project, number three.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. For our next installment on the Call Lake program, what we're going to go through right tonight is, we're going to give you a quick overview of the program, refresh our memories since it's been a while, and we're in the middle of changing our acquisition strategy. So, we'll give you an update on what that is. Obviously, what we're doing on terms of the survey, which feeds the 30% plans, and then environmental update, which is, for obvious reasons, pretty critical to us. And then, we want to give you a little bit of information on what we've seen in terms of lake level over at Call Lake, and give you reference on, based on those levels, where we stand with our design and our elevations of our infrastructure in that area. So, I'd like Michael to do it, please.
Thank you, Chris. For the new commission members, excuse me. It's great to be back in front of you. Again, I'm Michael Graves, program manager with Garver for the Call Lake program. Let's jump right in and give us a quick overview of the overall program. Most of you are very familiar with what we've got going on in regards to this new water supply. But for some of you that have not had a deep dive yet on the program, I'll give you just a brief overview, and then I'm available to speak with you guys at any time, to go as deep as we need to in the weeds on the program, if necessary. But this is an alternate water supply program to supplement Enid's groundwater supply source by accessing surface water in Call Lake. Call Lake is approximately 70 miles away from the city of Enid. The pipeline is reflected on this graphic. There are multiple segments that are color-coded and named. There's a name that represents each segment. The pipeline terminates on the west side of Enid, where there will be a new surface water treatment plant. The surface water treatment plant will blend surface water that meets the Safe Drinking Water Act with groundwater that will also meet the Safe Drinking Water Act before it is distributed to the community. The community will receive the same water. There won't be a portion of the community that will receive groundwater and another portion that will receive Call Lake water. All the water will be blended, and 100% of the community will receive the same water. We also have an intake structure at Call Lake, and this is, most of which is submerged below the surface. And then, there's a pump station at or near the bank. And we'll show you some figures of that later. And again, we can go into much more detail at some other time, those of you that aren't as familiar with the program. We have been working on this alternate water supply for quite some time. The city has taken on this endeavor for, I dare say, decades, and have finally found a feasible solution. We started in 2015 in phase one of this program, further developing the concept and defining some constraints around the program, coordination with multiple stakeholders. That culminated in an updated cost opinion, and then we rolled into the next phase where preliminary engineering occurred. We designed the full build-out of the program to the 30% complete level, again, updated the cost opinion, received feedback from this body and city staff on affordability, and then scaled back the full build-out design to a feasible project for the city. That was the culmination of phase two. We are now in phase three, have been since the fall of last year. Major components associated with phase three include the continuation of the environmental assessments that are ongoing. Because federal monies are associated with funding this project, there is an environmental policy act that must be followed, and we are embarking upon that now. We've been doing that for a couple of years, and that will culminate in phase three. That's to ensure that wetlands, endangered species, cultural resources, and things of that nature are not disturbed, or if they will be disturbed, that disruption is mitigated or avoided. Also, major components of phase three are the topography survey of the entire pipeline alignment, as well as where the facilities will be located, the intake and the water treatment plant. And then, as you have received multiple updates over maybe every meeting, the status of the land acquisition process and the 230 or 40-some-odd parcels that are currently being acquired for the pipeline. In addition to that stuff, we'll be completing the design and selecting a construction manager. And I'll report the status of that here in just a bit. After phase three, which we anticipate will end in December of 2020, phase four will commence. This is where we will actually start turning dirt and excavating for the facilities and the pipeline. That construction period will be ongoing, and at the completion of that construction period, we'll commence the startup and commissioning of the facilities, and ultimately program closeout, which is targeted for the summer of 2023. With regards to land acquisition, most of you are probably familiar with this graphic. I like to describe this as a snapshot in time as of June 17th, 2019. And so, as of that date, 40% of offer packets were in preparation. 40% of the overall 230 parcels, 40% of those were in offer packet preparation stage. 3% of those 230 were in the owners provided with a notice of intent pending an offer delivery. So, they have been notified that... Now, there's been way more than 3%, but at this snapshot in time, there are 3% of those that are in that stage. 38% are in the offer made and pending owner acceptance status, and 19% are in the easement offers accepted by owners. In fact, I think I delivered four more acceptance tonight, acceptance offers tonight to your engineering staff. So, so far, it looks like 43 of 230 parcels have been acquired. So, that's good progress.
So, it looks like 60% have already gone... Turn it back. So, it all adds up to 100%. So, 40% are in work and haven't been presented to anybody yet. The rest are in some stage of completion. 60% are in some stage of completion beyond that.
Or already have met that milestone. That's correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You bet. Good question. I also told you I'd update you on the status of the topography survey. I hope you can see the change in color here. There's an orange highlight here on the pipeline. Notice that the intake side or Call Lake is here, the water treatment plant site on the west side of Enid is here. And this is the only portion, this last portion is what's yet to be surveyed from a topography standpoint. So, tremendous progress has been made in this phase with regards to the completed topography.
Michael, can you let them know that there's nearly 11 projects within this, and that shows eight of them right there, the pipe unbroken, eight, just so that everybody...
Yeah, that's a good point, Gerald. I should have pointed that out on the first slide. We have identified 11 different projects, eight of which are reflected on this slide as the different pipeline segments. But we also have an intake pump station, which involves some infrastructure that's actually in the lake and as adjacent to the lake. That will pump the water, the 70 miles to Enid. Once it gets to Enid, we have a water treatment plant site, so there's some open storage there, some terminal storage reservoirs, kind of slow down the velocity of the water as it's coming out of this 36-inch pipeline, and kind of have some onsite storage there at the water plant. And then, the water plant itself has many treatment processes, mechanical processes by which we treat the surface water to drinking water standards. And then, the last or the 11th project is the distribution system tie-in. And so, there's some significant work, complicated work along Chestnut, where we are taking the blended water from the groundwater and the now newly-treated surface water, blending that, and then distributing it to the community. There's about three-mile distribution system tie-in. Those are the 11 projects. Thank you, Gerald, for pointing that out. Utility locate status, this is where we do our level best to identify what underground utilities are in the area and do our level best to try and avoid them with the design. Again, remind you that we have a 70-mile footprint, and there's a lot of stuff in the ground out there between here and there, a lot of oil and gas activity that we are trying to locate. So, what this represents is that there's two types of locates that we're doing. We're doing publicly accessible utility locate. So, those are utilities that are in right-of-way, where we have public access, and we can get with the public entity, whether it be the city or the county, to access those utilities and try to identify those. And we do this through a potholing method, where we actually put a pothole in the ground and try to identify exactly where the utility is, so that we can properly reflect it on the drawings. So, the public utility access has been completed from here all the way to here, and from here all the way to the lake. Then, we have private utility locates, where we're going to have to acquire easements that's not in the right-of-way, and we are notifying those private landowners that we're going to locate the utilities on their property. That is progressing also from west to east, and we are now at approximately that location right there, which I believe is just in the Breckenridge area, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you, Lou. So, that is progressing very well. You'll note that there hasn't been any utility locates done yet in the Arkansas River segment, but that is about to change. We've had very cooperative participation from the Osage Mineral Council. We had some meetings that we had with that group, and they are allowing us to move forward now with the public and private utility potholing. Environmental update, I mentioned why we're doing that earlier and a little bit about what that is. We are overall nearly complete with the environmental work. We still have a little bit of effort involved in these four areas, the biological studies, the cultural resource studies, hazardous materials, and then finally pulling together the entire environmental assessment. This is moving a little bit slower than anticipated due to limited access to some private properties. The city is working diligently to get us access to those properties, and I think there's a light at the end of the tunnel. Those efforts are becoming more and more positive, and look like we're going to be able to complete this on time. Chris mentioned that we had a change in acquisition strategy on the program earlier this year. Earlier this year, and originally, the program was planned to be a design-bid-build program, and now we are moving forward with a construction manager at-risk project delivery method, and then that construction manager will use the Oklahoma Competitive Bidding Act to meet all bidding requirements for different work packages. We made that decision earlier this spring. We have submitted an RFQ publicly. We had responses to that RFQ. We have decided to move forward in a two-step process, which is consistent with Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality requirements. That second step is now an RFP. We received qualifications, now we're soliciting proposals. We are working on that RFP for distribution to four qualified contractors that we have shortlisted for the next, I say "we," that the city has shortlisted for the next round. The reason that RFP has not hit the street yet is we are doing our best to complete the contract that the construction manager will be required to enter into with the city and include that contract as part of the RFP. We really want them to know what your expectations are before they decide to submit their proposal, so that there's not any back and forth after we deem them qualified and make their selection to move them forward. Expect that selection to be in late July, with a contract before this body in late August of this year.
So, is that when we anticipate having that number that we're trying to pin down, or is it going to be further down the road?
A little further down the road, Jonathan. That's just when we give them their notice to proceed and get them on board, and then we'll all get together, share documents with them on our design, and then they'll do an updated cost opinion 30 to 60 days after that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, flooding impact. Guys, been getting a little bit of rain up here, and so have lots of folks in the Arkansas River watershed. I don't know if you guys are like me, you're probably not a nerd like I am, but I like to sit in my living room and watch USGS rain gauges and stream gauges. And I've been watching them... That's what I do. I've been watching them from the city of Wichita area all the way down through Little Rock, Arkansas. And it's amazing what's been going on in that watershed, and kudos to the Corps of Engineers managing that water flow over the last month and a half, most of May, anyway. And so, I thought I would report to you, we have a unique situation here that we're in. We have a design, we have survey data, and we have a drone. And so, we have essentially put our design out there theoretically on the bank, and then we have flown the lake during its flood stage, and then dropped this 3D model in to where the water ended up, to see what would happen if that would have been built. And so, I'll be able to report some of that to you tonight. But first, I want to give you some boring engineering drawings, just to kind of set the stage. So, this top half of this slide here, you're looking down onto the bank of Call Lake. This is the water. This is underneath the water. This is the normal bank, normal pool elevation, how high the water normally is up on the bank. This is how high it got at its peak, May 24th, at 1,200 hours. Okay? This is your pump station. This is the site. Now, this half of the drawing is the profile, looking at it from the side, okay? Instead of on the top, now we're looking at it from the side. And you can see, this is where the lake normally is. This is all the underwater equipment that's proposed, and this is where the bank, or this is where the lake got up, close to your pump station on May 24th, 1,200 hours. Quite a bit of difference there between normal and max. But, didn't get to the pump station. Again, this is the high watermark that we had last month. This is about, let's see here, two and a half feet of freeboard from the max water level and the slab where your pumps are located. And then, about, oh, five or six feet of freeboard between the max water level and the slab for the electrical building at the pump station. Now, with that, I want to walk you through the drone. Now, we're flying the lake, all this stuff is flooded. This is the perspective. We're looking out into the water here. This is where your intake is, okay? So, we're looking in this cove now. Started it over, sorry, I think. Now, you're looking at your low road, Lou, which is going to be completely underwater.
Drone, take a boat.
Which is why we designed a high road to get in to the intake site. That's where your intake pump station will be. Look at the perspective again. We're looking now from the middle of the lake out toward your intake pump station. Low road is flooded, but our new high road is dry, and your pump station is dry.
Was this a record level for Call Lake on May 24th, or has it been higher?
In recent history, it's the highest. It's hard to tell whether it's been higher. There's just not really that great a data. I'm hesitant to say it's the highest it's been.
It's only been around since...
Yeah, mid-'70s, yeah. So, we're in good shape. We're in really good shape. I think it's well above flood stage right now in that graphic. It resulted in being well above flood stage. All of your equipment was safe, operational, and accessible. You know, DEQ requires that you protect from a 20, you protect your equipment, or you can access your equipment at a 25-year flood event, and that you protect your equipment from a 100-year flood event. This was beyond a 100-year event, and your equipment was not only protected, it was accessible. And it's because of that high road. You could have assessed it, accessed that equipment by boat, if we didn't put in the high road, but that's why we're putting in the high road. Any questions on that? Or any questions at all regarding the presentation?
Michael, I've got a quick question. Going back towards the first of your presentation, on the 43 parcels that you obtained the easements on, the 236 or 230, how are they staying within budget of what we intend to give per rod, I think it is, if they purchase that?
We are, we are. And you know, that's...
I know that's an ebb and flow.
It is. That's what I was going to try to say. It's hard to say exactly, you know, where we're at from a budget standpoint, but I can tell you that we're under budget overall. And you should be able to have access to some reports on that that we can give to you after the meeting, if you want. But, yeah, for the most part, we've done very well protecting your budget, your land acquisition budget. But hey, we're still early. There's a long way to go.
I know.
And as we've said in the past, you know, easement acquisition isn't the biggest piece of this program. It's not the most technical risk, it's not the most cost risk. It is the highest schedule risk, and so, we approach it that way.
And if you're going to have people holding out, they're going to be toward the other end with higher price tags than the beginning end. So, I wouldn't get too comfortable with...
Oh, we're not comfortable yet. I won't be comfortable until that says 100. And there's mold growing on that slide.
Let's talk about 100-year storm events, and so, that's the volume of water, it's not how often it happens, and how many times a year you can have, or how many times you can have 100-year...
It is frequency-based. The 100-year is the frequency estimate.
It's a probability, is really what it is. It's an estimate that you have any given year or day, you have a 1% chance of having that kind of rainfall.
As I understood it, we'd had like, you know, we've had three 50-year storm events in recent history. So, if I think about that, then that doesn't make sense on the 100-year. So, it's still the same probability?
It's still the same probability.
Yeah, it's like when you roll the dice. Whatever you got this time, you could get exactly the same thing next time. It's unlikely.
But it wouldn't be 100 years from now that we would...
Oh, no, 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 no.
It could be next month.
No, you can't do that. And that's one of the things...
So, it is a volume of water.
It is a rate of rainfall over a period of time based on a model event. The challenge is, nature doesn't follow our models precisely. And so, you know, you can get, because it's over a 24-hour period. Well, if you get a hurricane, you get all that over a couple hours. And if you live in a place like we do, where there's a lot of drainage and a lot of drainage basin, the water piles up real fast.
So, in the event that water were to, worst-case scenario, come over into those pumps, would it totally destroy the pumps?
If the water would have to get not only the two and a half feet of freeboard to the lowest adjacent grade, the lowest floor, plus another four to four and a half feet to the electric motors. From the electric motors down is all mechanical. And it is protected from the elements. The pumps are protected by their casings, but submersion is never good for an electric motor. So, you've got...
So, the question really is, is it high enough? Are we comfortable that we're not going to have a... But if we have a biblical flood, everything's going to...
If we have a biblical flood, we've got bigger problems. This is two and a half feet to this lowest adjacent floor right here, and then there's another four, four and a half feet to get to that electric motor. And you're still not to your control room and electrical room or chemical room. You've got more to go.
Can I say one more thing about that?
That's a really good question. And so, you start to think, do we invest the dollars to raise it higher to avoid the 500-year, which is supposed to happen once every 500 years? But sometimes these storms stack, and you get them more frequent. And I think you've got to think a little bit about what the operational advantages are. You can access this pump station. A guy over there can watch the same gauges that I'm watching from my couch, and he can figure out, okay, this is rising at a rate, but I need to get out there and pull those motors.
Yeah, I can turn it off and shut it down and make sure that we... We'll still have the backup of the water wells to make... This is great, because we'll have two sources of water, one at the lake, one at the wells. If we have problems with this intake structure, we can shut it down, get it ready for the storm, and then operate off the wells and have a backup. And vice versa, if something happens out here in the wells, I can go right back to Call. And I can utilize Call to give us my second source of water. We have an ice storm in the well fields, we have power outages, whatever we have, I've got Call as a backup, so I got it both ways.
Okay. Really good question. So, the issue there is then... So, so the issue, so the issue there is then, is then capacity. You know, we've lost capacity, right? Because we pulled the motors and the pumps can't run. But, you're in a wet period. So your capacity demands are down. Your well field could probably meet your capacity demand at that point. So, all of that went into some of the decisions that we made about where we put it, why we put it, why we sized it the way we did. All those type of operational complexities went into that decision. It's a good question, though.
The, uh, I understand the impacts there, if we ended up having to pull the motors or whatever. The other one that you just mentioned, if the water field dried up, we could use this. But we couldn't blend it with anything, you can't use that without treatment, right?
Yes, sir. We could, we could get this water cleaned up enough to where we meet all the regulatory requirements. Without blending.
Yeah, it will, it will already be treated to meet the regulatory requirements. It's more of a function of blending to what our customers and what our infrastructure is used to.
Right. Marali pointed out a great point. In addition to the operational modifications we can make, you know, we can pull these motors and save those motors. And then we're worried about the slab here and getting into the electrical equipment, motor control centers. Lot of costly equipment in there, particularly for pumps of this size. This slab right here is at, um, elevation 1063. The top of the dam at Call Lake is at 1056.5. So there's about...
A lot of bigger problems.
Well, it's all, it all has to do with how, how fast we can get rid of the water because we're bound by what they can, how they release it downstream from here. In Tulsa just recently, they were getting 100,000 gallons more per second than they could release. So, that's a...
But if the top of the dam is lower than the floor, we've got bigger problems. We've got bigger problems.
Okay.
That gets back into the operation of the dams itself, so the engineers and other things make sure they prepare this little flooding spot.
So to the point you're making is, it's well engineered to this point to account for what has been, at least at some levels, the news channels have reported record flooding on the Arkansas.
Correct.
And, that information about the level of the dam of Call Lake, it would seem highly improbable that this would ever flood.
We're talking about, like he said, an arc kind of event.
But hopefully it won't happen overnight, and we have some time to prepare for it and make arrangements and do whatever we need.
You know, and we did, you know, Michael and his team, they did look back and couldn't necessarily prove that this is the historical high. But we think it's pretty close.
Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you. Item number four, discuss the sidewalk ordinance.
Thanks, Mary. City Commissioners. Planning Commission has spent three planning state sessions on this ordinance. They began in March, April, and May. Over the last 30 days, staff has worked with a subgroup of the Planning Commission to take those ideas and issues that were identified in the study sessions, and we started looking at what an ordinance might look like. There are eight thoughts here on the screen in front of you. They fall into new language, deletions, and exemptions. The number one item up there is, we felt like the sidewalk regulations for residential were fine. And so we're recommending no change to that. For everybody new in the room, if you build a new residential subdivision, the ordinance requires you to build sidewalks. If you are in an existing subdivision and it has sidewalks, and you, there's one or two lots that are left in that subdivision, you select and you build on one of those, then you will build a sidewalk there as well. On the east side of my town, if you build a sidewalk where we have an existing system and that sidewalk is missing, then you'll make that connection in the width of your deal. So, it hasn't always been that easy, but over the years, it's become that. And we haven't seen any variances on that, so we feel like that's working pretty, pretty well. The second item up there is, in the ordinance, we required sidewalks within the development. The recommendation is to delete that. And the reason for is Americans with Disability Act, ADA, already requires that. So this would be redundant regulation, so that's the reason that's gone. Number three is where most of the change occurred. New language is in there that addresses when you do commercial. And I need to slow down here for just a second. You'll see the words industrial and special use as well. So please don't interpret that as that applies to all industrial and special use citywide, it does not. In a minute, you're going to see where the ordinance is indicating to you where sidewalks should be. And in those locations, there is a small amount of industrial and special use zoning, so that's what is there. This section primarily addresses when commercial development is required to build a sidewalk. And so we backed up and thought the residential component worked so well. When you do new residential, you do new sidewalk, we took that concept and applied it to commercial. So, most of the change is in item number three. Number four, in the current ordinance, if you did an addition regardless of how big it was, you have to build a sidewalk. And as you know, you granted several variances on that because we had some additions as small as 80 square feet, 800 square feet. And the cost of the sidewalk was disproportionately high in relationship to the cost of the addition. So, I think the original intent approximately six, eight years ago when this became an ordinance, when you're building a new project, the actual cost of a sidewalk is a small percentage of that. But when you're doing an addition, then it can be flipped and then it becomes a hardship on that business. So, that's that one. Number five, it exempts you from building a sidewalk in a ditch. Six, there was lots of discussion on, you know, we've had some variances along Gharriet from Oakwood to Garland. Most of that is developed. And there's probably going to be some businesses there that will do some remodels where it's a new roof, there's upgrades to the exterior, highly unlikely that they'll do any kind of addition. So there was some discussion that maybe there should be a trigger to require sidewalk based on that. The end analysis was, the Planning Commission is recommending to not do that because it felt like it would discourage investment in our existing building stock, which we don't want to discourage. A great example of where we recently got new investment is where the Western Sislin Building used to be and now is the home of the Swaddle East Barbecue. They went in there and spent a substantial amount of money on that building that you could probably argue could have been torn down, but they chose not to and good on them. And we're thankful that they chose the site and developed where we already have infrastructure, road, water, sewer. And so that's very positive for us. Number seven, if you didn't build the sidewalk under the current ordinance, there was a fee in lieu of, you could pay. And originally, that was going to come back to the commission to make that decision. The commission directed the city attorney to make a change in that ordinance and have it go to the engineering to make that change. And when Carol was introducing that change to the Planning Commission in March, that's when they said, or February, that's when they said, there's more things we want to talk to you about in this. And so, actually what was being proposed back in February with what you're going to see here in a little bit, we're deleting that. We don't see that there's a need to do that because the ordinance that you're going to see specific where the sidewalk should be, and it's where you would think they would be at commercial centers along our major thoroughfares, which would be Gharriet and Van Buren. And so there's really no need for that. And then the last one is, there's no requirement for sidewalks outside of what the designated area is. And the only other thing on the slide, that a considerable amount of discussion was on, we the city should work to identify projects and funding options and do projects that are outside what are going to be captured by the residential developments and the commercial developments. And that gets to a lot of your trail system. So we began looking at what's our comprehensive plans say. That's full of dots, there's big dots and little dots. The little ones are neighborhood centers and they're close, and they serve the immediate neighborhood that they're in. The larger ones are community centers and they not only serve the residents of the city of Enid, but they also serve the residents in our trade tributary. A good example of a community center is there at Garland and Gharriet. And we have three businesses there, Atwoods, Walmart, and Lowe's that all trade to a bigger area than just Enid. So that's an example of what that would be. There's the definitions for those. And this is a corridor, we do have strip development on Gharriet and Van Buren. So what we did with that, whoops, it went too fast. So what we did is, this is now just a narrow photo. And we superimposed those centers on the map. And I gave you some roads there so you can see what our comp plan and the one you had before both encouraged commercial development at intersections of arterials. So the concept from a traffic moving standpoint, you have activity here, pretty much residential. This would be Cleveland, and this is Oakwood, this is Willow. You know, traffic flows and then slows to where you have another center. This is less desirable because you have so much traffic flowing in and out of business onto that street. So that's the concept. But, you know, we have had a strip here for a long time, we've had a strip here. The original strip would have been Grand out of downtown. So that's probably something you would not like to do, but it's something that we have, we're going to make the best of it. So, this shape right here represents my overlay downtown district. Obviously, we want to have sidewalks in there. This is Randolph, Broadway, and Main, all the way to 10th. Any questions on that? So this is the basis of where should we have commercial sidewalks stems with the comp plan? Here's how it actually applies. I'm sorry, now we're into the, what an ordinance looks like. But we felt like we needed to kind of take some of the concepts, put it into here. By no means is this the final ordinance, this is just MAPs, Cs. They've completed their work, this is their recommendation to you, and I'm sure there'll be changes as we move forward.
Chris?
Yes?
Before you go any more forward, go back to the yellow lines. And those are the commercial areas that you would be required to put sidewalks in if you do what?
Good question. Let's just say you're right here. This is fairly new zoning out here and is undeveloped right now. But when they develop new, then they'll be required to build a sidewalk. And it'll be required for the zoning, or the development, or the lot, whichever's smallest. I got a whole slide because that's a real important concept, how much do I build and when do I build it? The concept is, is when you build something, you build that proportionate sidewalk to it. Even though you may have more zoning and/or even more lot, you don't have to do that until you develop that part. Did that answer your question?
What happens if I've got a building out there that doesn't have a sidewalk and I decide to... You brought it up, change the roof.
You do not have to build a sidewalk.
What if I add on? Add 100 square feet in the back?
Under the proposal that you're going to see, the answer would be no. The Planning Commission is aware that under our site plan ordinance, there's a 500,000 square foot rule. If it's less than that, no site plan. And so the first run at this was to match the sidewalk ordinance with the site plan. My subgroup met and they thought 5,000 was too large. And so the number being proposed tonight is 2,500. So in your example of doing 100 square foot addition, you would be exempt.
But if I did 2,600?
You would do a sidewalk. And again, the idea is, the larger the addition, the more expense is then proportionally smaller for this costed sidewalk. That now, we may not have the right number, that's something that you guys can resolve. But your current ordinance, if you add a square foot, you've got to do a sidewalk. And one of those examples was, there's a club at 30th and Chestnut, is that right, Carla?
Yes.
Club 30? He did an 80 square foot addition, I think it was for an office. And it's a corner lot. And he would have had to build, I don't know, it's like $40,000, $50,000 worth of sidewalks. And he's probably building an 8,000, or very nice 8,180 square foot office. So that's an example. Plus, it is way out in an area that people aren't really walking. Now, that doesn't mean you're not going to see somebody walking there. You know, we checked the, and I need to kind of back up a little bit. A lot of studies have been done on Americans, the average American will walk a quarter of a mile. That's important. Now, Europeans beat us a little bit, they do a third, but that's not much more. But why that's important, if you live in one of these many rooftops up here, and I have a lot of population here, they're near as centers or this. So let's just say you live here, that's more than a quarter mile there at that C store that you can buy a stick of gum or a bottle of pop. If you've got to buy groceries, you're going to Jumbo's, that's a car event. So that's, that's important. So what, we were out here on 30th and Club 30, I think I'm about right somewhere in here. I mean sidewalks out here, you can see, isn't even in this particular area. So I answered several questions and I appreciate that. And I'm going to go over them again, but did I capture?
You did, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else, please stop me. You will not hurt my feelings. We won't spend much time on the ordinance because I know these aren't pretty. But we added a definition for ditch. That becomes important in a minute because we have an exception. And so if you have an exception, then you have to define the ditch. And that's probably not the last definition. It was borrow pit or borrow ditch, and now it's a ditch. And this has drawn a lot of attention, so we'll probably see more. We dropped in, well, what are community centers and neighborhood centers? Well, I'm just referring back to the comp plan, I showed those to you, those red dots, so we know what those are. The next change is, this is more structural. In your current ordinance, all the sidewalk requirements are lumped together, whether it's residential or commercial. And as a staff person working with a residential developer, it's hard on them to ferret through there and see what is it that applies to me building houses? And it's also true, what does that apply to me, I'm doing a commercial development. So I broke it apart, so that's why you see the word residential underlying, that means we've added something. And then down below, you see I've deleted four and five. Well, those talk about commercial, industrial, now I'm in my residential section, so that's why they're gone. Okay? And then number C is, that's the requirement to do internal sidewalks. And we talked about the need not to do that because of ADA. So that's the end of residential. This is a commercial. I purposely grayed out all these words, but these, this is written words of the map that I showed you. And we have to have that. But what's important on here is in dark, and it's not much, but I do want to go over this so it's clear. If you're a commercial, industrial, or special use, and you're doing a new development or you're doing an addition greater than 2,500 square feet, you're doing redevelopments and infill. So if you had something there, you demolished it and you came back new, that would be a redevelopment, you would do a sidewalk. Abutting streets within the following areas, and those would be downtown Enid, community center and neighborhood center, and abutting the following streets, all of these shall have sidewalks. Any questions on that?
Yeah, that's confusing.
It is, okay. Let me try to do a little better job.
A graphic, a graphic would work better.
Okay, that's good. Forget about commercial and special use. If you're building a new restaurant, as an example, and it's in downtown, you're going to build a sidewalk, does that make sense? If it's not there, downtown has a lot of sidewalks, assume this is a site downtown that doesn't have one. So if it was in one of my community centers, vacant land, building a restaurant, you'd build a sidewalk, does that make sense? Now I'm going to test you. If you were doing it in a neighborhood center, would you, new restaurant in a neighborhood center, would you build a sidewalk?
Yes.
Very good. So how am I doing? Trying to make this better. Then if you're along one of these streets, those were the yellow lines on my picture, let me just back up here. These are the streets defined here. If you're building along these, a new restaurant, no sidewalk there now, you're going to build a sidewalk, makes sense? So what makes, I think, this a little bit hard is we throw in additional zoning. And there's only a little piece of zoning, I think Carla, it's at Grand and Willow, kind of Rock Island at that neighborhood center, there's a little, which would have been Freeman's Trucking. That's industrial. Stevens Ford is a bit of industrial right there on Gharriet. Those are the two that come to my mind. We have some special use, and remember that that's parks, public buildings and schools, and they, those sometimes occur in these locations. So, it's a very small percentage, most of this is commercial. Now let's take, I got an existing restaurant and I do a 2,600 square foot addition... Now, let's take, I got an existing restaurant, and I do a 2,600 square foot addition, I will build a sidewalk. Is that helping?
Yeah.
That make more sense? And maybe a matrix that checks that off? That's a great idea. Anything that makes it easy for my customers to understand is good. Because that's...
I like the map that you had before. I would just reference the map in this area and say, so that...
We may make it attachment.
Yeah, some people are more visual, others...
I will tell you, when I sit down with my planning commissioners, they attack this with a vengeance. And it was great. But what's cool about it, and actually what they did was study this, and this is the end work. You're not seeing the original thing.
No.
And so when they started adding and subtracting, it was very easy. Carla was over there just typing away, you know, deleting things, adding things. So what I'm telling you, if this doesn't capture what you want, it's very easy for you to add. If there's areas that the planning commission has not identified, super easy to add to this format.
But for an ordinance, you need these words.
Right.
I mean, I, yeah.
Well, because what we'll say, you're in violation of C38. I mean, you have to have that kind of reference.
Yes.
Chris, you're gonna get some more questions, but could you recognize our NIPC?
Yes. My chairman is, yeah, my chairman Marvin Kuzick, please stand. And my co-chairman Cole Reamer here.
Yeah, come on up if you want to have. You guys did the work on this, and I know two commissioners...
They're fine.
Commissioner Waddell, who was on MAPC for quite a while, and now Commissioner Mason. I think you're the rep from the commission, but before you, remember helping study this. So we appreciate your work.
Yeah.
And if you want to say anything, please do, or help answer questions.
I think what's significant about this ordinance change is it's not a word, it's not a delete a sentence or add a sentence. It's pretty much a rewrite, but keeps all the good things that were working for you. So that, that's important.
Chris, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
On a residential, does it apply to residential when you go in and add a building, or a garage, or a storage building? Do you have to put a sidewalk in?
Let's look at that. And it's all captured right here on this slide, so we don't have to go around much. So here's our new reg. So if you're building new, the answer is yes. Redevelopment or infill on property used or zoned as R4A, R5, and R7, you'll do a sidewalk. Redevelopment or infill development or property used for R1, R2, we have a lot of R2. Most of us in this room live in an R2, okay? And then you have to do, and there's a sidewalk adjacent on each side of you, then you're gonna do it. Does that make sense? Your question is, if I do a storage building in the backyard, am I gonna need to do it? And the answer is no. And that shows up, sir, here in the exceptions, and that's right here, number four. It was two, but we added these, so it becomes four. So placement and construction of accessory building does not trigger a side plan.
So part four to...
Right.
No, you don't have to worry about it.
Again, the idea is, if we're doing something significant, building new or a major addition, we're, the property owner's spending a lot of money, and we want to keep the cost of that sidewalk low. That's the fundamental concept.
One more question on that.
Yes, sir.
What if the majority of that neighborhood doesn't have any sidewalks in it, and you do an addition, a larger addition to that home? Even if it's a R2?
If there's no sidewalks in the neighborhood, then you, and you build a new house in that neighborhood, but no sidewalks, you don't have to build one.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's all been kind of tested. Okay, we've spent a lot of time here, and then the feedback from Commissioner was maybe a matrix. We'll work on that. Hopefully, I've made that a little better. Let's go down here, because this is real important. How big are these centers? That's what number five is saying. And those of you who have been here as long as me or longer can remember, in our previous comp plan, there were set dimensions, like 640 feet and stuff like that. They were called nodes. But it was one size fits all. Well, your town is not built that way, and I would say you don't want it built that way. Each neighborhood center is gonna be unique unto itself. And I've come up with a way to help determine, not only for us in working with our customers, or our customers can easily understand, well, why am I building a sidewalk? I think this is gonna help make that better. It's real important, and I hinted on this talking before, the sidewalk is the width of the zoning, the lot, or the development, whichever's less. That's real important language. Now, I'm gonna give you an example. Well, how do you, what do you mean, Chris? This is a neighborhood center at Randolph and Oakwood, and my friend Randy Hamm is gonna build a Pontiac Stewart dealership here. And I purposely did this because it illustrates the three things. If he were developing all of this, he would build sidewalks the whole way, i.e. the zoning. Does that make sense? I know he's not, because I've seen his plan. He basically is building here. So if he builds here, then he's gonna do sidewalks here and to where his development stops. When he builds down here, he'll continue it. So that's the second one. And then the third one is lot. And so I'll use this corner. Here's the size of this, which is all this C2, but you can see it's made up of multiple lots. Let's just say, I don't know what's there, it looks vacant. But if I buy this and I build a restaurant there, then it's gonna be the width of my lot. Does that make sense? I don't build all along here, because I'm building on this lot. So it's sized by the zoning, the development, or the lot, and the benefit falls to the person developing, whichever is less is less they do. That's a real important concept. Make sense? If I beat it to death, I apologize. We'll go on to a community center, and I picked one that we're heavily involved in. This is the Courts. Disregard that you see issue there, my tools have not caught up. We have rezoned that. There's a lag time between my stuff, so I apologize. It really is C3. But the size of this center is, look at all this, this sets the size of that, okay? And that is a regional shopping center. There's stuff in that shopping center that people outside Enid come and trade in. And we know the kind of development that we're getting ready to do here is gonna draw bigger than our tributary. So it's appropriately considered a community center, based on our comprehensive plan. But the same thing would apply again. You've got multiple lots here, and I'll just, I'll just pretend this is empty. I know there's a building there, but the person builds a building, they would do a sidewalk the width of their lot. Make sense? Okay. Any questions on that? I probably really beat on that too much. Obviously, commercial keeps going, but remember, Gharriat is a corridor development per your comp plan, which is fancy word for strip zoning.
What's the minimum width on all the sidewalks? Is there a minimum?
Five foot. We can encourage wider.
Okay.
Five's the minimum. Okay, next one. We're back to more ordinances. So we've talked about some definitions, we've talked about residential, we've talked about commercial. Here are the exceptions. We've deleted the one on unimproved roads. In the plan that you've seen, there are none of those. Our previous ordinance was citywide, and we had a lot of variances, people building a house or something on a dirt road, and they're going, why am I building? I had a guy come to me, I had a quarter section, 160 acres, building his dream house, and in the early versions, made him build a sidewalk. He came and asked for a variance, but he had a really funny way of saying, he said, "Chris, my cows don't need a sidewalk." And I couldn't agree with him more. But those are some of the evolutions that you may not be aware of, but your current residential has all addressed that and is working well. So that's gone. Here's this size. Now, that's the number the planning commission is suggesting to you, you may want to change that. This now becomes your body of work after this presentation, and you can make it lower, you can make it higher. But I've already given you the rationale behind the planning commission of why they chose that. In a ditch, we're saying you don't have to build it. In a ditch, if the side slope, if the slope of the ditch is greater than 1 in 3, I know I'm using some technical geeky language here, but my arm is 1 in 3. This is a 45-degree angle. This is really hard. So when it's low, there are some ditches in town that if I stood in the bottom of them, I could not see the road. They're that deep. There are others that you can see my knees if I stood in the middle of it. And the other takeaway you need to take here, just because there's a ditch in front of your property, you may not be exempt from a sidewalk, because outside that ditch, but still within the right of way, is adequate space to build the sidewalk, you get to build the sidewalk. So there's a lot going on in number two. And of course, our engineering department will work with our customers, and we'll make all those determinations. So if they come in, we look at a map, hey, it looks like you got a ditch, we gotta go a little deeper. What's the slope of that ditch? Is there room? Before we can say you're exempt. Any questions on that? That's pretty important. Okay? And that's why we had the definition of a ditch. Three, we talked about maintenance and remodels. Total loss is defined in this ordinance, is if a tornado hits you, you get to put back what you had, and you don't have to build a sidewalk. Okay? And that's all, we didn't touch that. That definition was already there. But just take Oakwood Mall, for example. If you put a roof on that building, that's several million dollars. And we, and you need to keep a roof on it, good, because it protects the building. So that's an overstatement of maintenance and keeping a building good and solid shouldn't necessarily trigger a sidewalk. There's the accessory building, agricultural zone, that was there before. So we don't talk about cows walking on sidewalks anymore. That's been taken care of. The last thing, this came from my city manager, I went through this with him, and he said, "Chris, tell me why we need a fee in lieu of. If this gets adopted as the way it is, there won't be any variances." I shouldn't say that. The number of variances will come way down. But you were seeing this, if they weren't gonna build it, they had, you gave them the option to pay a fee in lieu of. Here, you're now saying, we want sidewalks in these locations. We understand we're not gonna make you put it in a ditch, so we've covered that. It's not the full width of your zoning, it's the development size or the lot size. So you've, the ordinance addresses a lot of the problems. That doesn't mean they won't come and ask a variance. It'll be interesting to see what you say. I would venture to say I know the answer. But I will say, there might be a good time for a variance, because basically, our thinking is paralleling the street. I mean, if you go outside this building, that's what the state of Oklahoma gave us when they did the upgrade on 412. I would tell you, that's not a very pleasant experience to be pushing your baby in a stroller and you're 12 inches away from a semi doing 45 mile an hour. So that's just an example of, maybe we have somebody that has some design in a project, and say, instead of being a straight line, maybe I want to be a serpentine and some landscape, and I want some of it on my property, will you allow me to do that? That would be a variance that I think would be worthy to come to you that would allow a better quality design. And I'll tell you, as a designer, ordinances don't necessarily give you good design. It's just, they can't. So that would be a good example. But some of the variances that I think that you've seen over the last few years probably will stop. And I think I have one last slide, and then I'm done. Gerald asked me to superimpose the ordinance on top of the trails, and I hope that you can see that light blue line. That shows you, once the trail system is built out with what the commercial is going to give you, what the residential is going to give you, you're gonna have a very walkable community. Is it gonna happen next week? No. Over time, this will occur. That's into my comments, and I'll yield to my chairman and vice chairman if I missed anything. They're being kind to me.
Any other questions from anybody?
Thank you for allowing me to...
Well, just to let you know real quick, if you do have any changes, you let us know, because otherwise, there's no reason why we wouldn't bring it back the next time.
Right.
Or soon, anyway, for your consideration.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Carol, do we have time for the Z3?
Sure.
Okay.
It's not that complicated.
Item number five, discuss Z3 zoning ordinance.
Right now, C3 does not permit R7 residential multifamily district uses. And generally, our ordinances, the uses accumulate. And we've got some large houses and other structures in C3 that, and a particular one is on Broadway. It's a very large house. It does not have a lot of parking, and it doesn't have much yard. And entity is thinking that they would like to have a multi, you know, allow more than just family there. I have looked at it, I think Mr. Gilbert's looked at the house. I haven't gone inside the house. But the use that, you know, having it be a boarding house, or a rooming house, or the particular use that they're thinking about, would be a good use of this property. It's on Broadway. It is not in the downtown, but it's really close. And there's other, there's other apartment complexes nearby, and there's businesses. And I was actually, when they talked to me about it, I thought C3 would probably include the residential uses, because I know that we've got C3 properties that are residential in nature, and it doesn't. So this was, I mean, I went through quite a few different ideas about what to do, and we do have, for example, if you were at, you know, we're redoing La Homma Courts. La Homma Courts has been, most of those properties have been commercial for, have been zoned commercial for years. And if we had had, you know, a large house of lot, you know, if smack, we didn't, they were all about the same. But if we had a big house smack dab in this, it might have been helpful to be able to put several different, you know, 15 people in there. It didn't, you know, the most we had there, I think, were duplexes. So this would allow you to have those uses. It doesn't have much applicability. But there are a few houses that are C3. For instance, I think we, like, there was discussion, we recently did a rezoning of one house close to La Homma Courts on the other side. And if that had been a bigger house, and there was questions about, okay, if it doesn't, if the coffee shop doesn't make it, what could it be? If it had been one of the bigger homes, it could be considered a for R7, which basically just means more than one family. Now, Mr. Gilbert asked me, why did I put R7 here? And I didn't, it has C1, there is a gap. There's the commercial office. And commercial office would still not have R7 residential uses. And I base that just on reading what commercial office is. The commercial office is the lowest commercial use, and possibly having R7 uses in CO might not fit that. It's kind of a buffer. We don't have a lot of CO, but, so, this is my suggestion. I, there's a lot of different ways we could do it, but in general, if you've got a big house and it's zoned C3, one of the things that, if we don't do something like this, then if you've got this big house, it is zoned C3, and you want to put a multifamily thing in, then you would have to rezone it to R7. Now, in, what's wrong with that? Well, it's costly to rezone. And if we were, and in this instance, if you rezoned it to R7, and the particular use that they're trying to do did not work, then you wouldn't, you, there's not very much use for this house. You, it's... You, it's pretty big. It would be hard to find a family that's big enough to be in this big old house right on Broadway with lots of traffic if there, if it's one family and it's a, I guess what I'm trying to say is, this would allow them to keep their C3 use and not have to keep rezoning it back and forth, because I think it would be a very rare family that there would be enough parking if the family has teenagers, and if they've got lots of kids, this is not the house that you would pick, because there's too much parking and there's not enough yard.
Let me ask you a couple of questions.
Yes.
So generally, C3 is the most liberal and gives you the most permissions in terms of what to do.
Exactly.
So bringing R7 in just brings it in line to where, again, it's already the most permissive, and so as you look at different uses to be able to use C3, this would just be another way in order to be able to utilize that property without having to rezone it, because it's already...
Right.
The most liberal. So it sounds like it's just working its way down to the progression that it was supposed to be anyway, and we're just putting in writing at this particular...
Would that cause, let me ask a follow-up question on that. Would that cause or allow apartment complexes to be able to go in anywhere in C3 without us having any control over that? Anywhere that was C3, would they then be able to place an apartment?
Sure. Yes. But, you know, right now, there is a move to, if, there is a move to have integrated, and Chris can talk about that.
Mixed-use development.
But mixed-use development is very, yeah.
Where you have apartments, single-family homes, and commercial, like you see in Cleveland and Chestnut.
Yes. So for instance...
So what they're doing there is they're, you have shops on the bottom floor, and then on the top floor, you have an apartment complex, and you have multi-use here. And it's also, it's very, very popular when you start going into developing areas like we're doing, doing down Cleveland. So I think this goes right in line with what our, you know, our overall plan is to do with areas like that.
And now, in reality, I'm not sure, I don't, I don't see a problem with doing the mixed. I think it's really popular. Like, hotels are mixed. In, not here, but in bigger places, you walk into the hotel, and you've got little shops and everything, and then you've got the hotel up above. And you could have, instead of up above, you could have some cool apartments and some businesses and stuff. It's done a lot where people go up. I mean, we don't go up that much.
You could already have all those uses in C3.
Yeah.
If you want to slowly scroll down.
Yeah.
You could have bars and taverns, private clubs, billiards, pool halls.
Yes.
Bottling works. Scroll down, please.
You can have hotels.
Mowing alleys. I mean, you can have all kinds of stuff.
And you can have a group home that's 20, it doesn't say in here, but you could have a group home with 20 people in C3.
Service garages.
Up to 20 people?
Yeah.
Itinerant merchant transient vendors, whatever that is. Kennels. Medical facilities. So it is, if you want to call it liberal, it allows a lot of uses. I don't care whether you really, whether you guys do it or not. It's, but what is important for staff is to be able to make decisions based on what is in the code. This would make it easier and clearer, quite frankly, for a current situation we have. But there may be other ways to deal with that current situation as well.
There. Tourist courts and motels for travel and camp trailers. We already allow that in C3.
So you could probably have a giant mini storage place there, transferred storage offices.
And Chris has told me before, and I don't know what he feels about this, but Chris has told me before that we have, we may have an excess of C3 in our community. There are some buildings that are, you know, not used. Actually, along West Gharriat, there are a lot of shuttered, well, I shouldn't say a lot, but there are a few shuttered businesses and stuff. So this just gives them a little bit more flexibility. And this was the easiest of, there's also some, some issues...
I don't know that it's the easiest.
It's the clearest.
It's the clearest to me. Certainly, Chris probably has an opinion. He could tell you what his opinion is himself, or anybody. This is a study session, so...
Yeah.
We're just constantly, the city, we have issues where people want to do things that the rules don't allow. And one of the things that's become very clear to me recently is, if we want to have regulation, let's make sure that it's clearly interpretable by the staff, so that we're enforcing what you want enforced, because many times, what we run into is, well, why aren't you business friendly? Because you don't allow this. Well, we follow the rules, and we want to be business friendly. I don't know if this gets at what you're asking, Mr. Mason. Again...
Circle back to what's driving this again, specifically.
There is an interpretation issue with, there's a place on Broadway or Main.
Yeah, Broadway.
A big house.
A big house, right.
A big house.
And, and I've sent you all a memo on it. Hope Outreach wants to put people in there and do a 12-step program, and the people they want are nonviolent, non-sexual offenders who could use a 12-step program. And I have listened to them, and the house sounds perfect. Now, they are not in prison, and they are not work release or anything like that. They are free to just populate the community, but Hope Outreach has said that it is, that there is a significant number of men who would like to be in a 12-step program with supervision. And, and they have researched it and talked about the fact that the fair housing law does not, does not support, our ordinances are, this would help. I guess what I'm trying to say, they want, one of the things that they asked was, would I, or would you, just say, because of the fair housing standards, will you exempt us and allow us to put this facility in? And I thought, okay, well, I thought that C3 would have allowed it, one. It doesn't on its face. Now, we could do use by review, but Chris thought that that was maybe not appropriate.
Well, let me, let me say, Chris can speak for himself.
Sure.
But a use by review, it's not clear. I think that's the point.
Right, right.
It's not clear. So if you want staff to, if the commission wants staff, so we're talking a lot about this, please keep explaining it, but we'd like to hear your thoughts about this, and maybe we need more study on this.
I think it doesn't make sense for us to not have, be able to have a mixed-use commercial and residential property right now. When, that's our, our master plan directs, that that's, that's the direction that we're going. And so despite any type of project that maybe, that may have sparked us making this change, based on what we've said in terms of what, what our development and what we're gearing for, what we're looking for, we need to, we need to look at revising this in order to be able to just fit what our plan was. Because as it stands right now, the development that we've been posturing for, for a couple of years now, wouldn't go forward unless we, unless we make revisions anyway in order to be able to do it.
We would, what, what it would, the vehicle we would use now for a mixed use would be a pod.
But we shouldn't. There's no, there's no reason, when we can just, when we can just change the ordinance to meet the intent on what we want to do for the community as a whole. There's no reason for us to go through all this.
That's why this, this one makes sense.
And I'm not opposed to this at all. I like what Hope Outreach is trying to do. I don't want to cause an unfortunate event that we didn't anticipate later on.
Okay.
That's my only concern on this, that we, we add something else, and the next thing you know, we've got something popping up, and they're going, hey, it's already zoned for that. So I, I just want to make sure that what we're doing is good for the long haul and not just for this one event. I'm not opposed at all, but I just want to make sure that there's no unintentional consequences.
That's a good point. And my concern on this as well, I agree with maximizing the use of a facility or building or a home. But I don't want to see children living above a bar or anything like that. You know, I mean, just...
Okay.
Because once we set ordinances, we want to make it clear that people fully understand.
Well, downtown, we probably could already have kids living, I mean, and actually, not in the last 50 years, but for like 300 years, there, I mean, you know, before, I mean, people, their parent, you know, your parents were living on the second story, I mean, all over houses that, that happens. I mean, all over the community, it used to happen. We used to have people, they'd have a little grocery store, and then they would be living above it. And like, I think the art group, you know, at one point on downtown, they redid their second story, and they were going to live above their art place. And like, right now, it wouldn't be right below, but then there's like the brewery, you know? So if, I'm not sure that they ever actually lived there, but their intention was to have a downtown art place, and then above, they would have their family and their little dog upstairs. Now, it's complicated, because they probably have to sprinkle and stuff, and it sounds fabulous, but it's really hard. But, you know, I guess I would say, you know, it's the parents that should probably decide whether they want to be. And, and there's bars, and there's bars. I mean, you know, I wouldn't have, other than the fact that I have animals, I wouldn't have a problem living above Callahan's or, or the side, on the sidewalk. There are some bars I would think twice about, but this is just an idea...
Just, just so you know, because we're short on time. What I'm hearing is, we probably should have more study on this, and I'm for that. I will bring it to you. I think the question had been asked, are it good questions? Because every time we change an ordinance, a sidewalk ordinance is a great deal. Every time we changed it, we thought we were doing good, and there were unintended consequences, which we think we got fixed this time. So we will come back, probably next time, and have more study on this.
I agree. So commissioners, if you have any other comments that you'd like them to consider during the next study session, go ahead.
Okay. There's, there's one thing we could, I mean, you know, there's already any other similar business or service which is in keeping with the general description. I mean, one of the things is, if you want to go use by use, you know, specific circumstance by specific circumstance, you could do a use by review. I mean, it's right there, and that was one of my other ideas. I gave you guys five...
Well, like I said, I'm opposed to it. I just think we probably need to fully vet it and think it through a little more before we jump out there.
Well, maybe we have it, we could bring, take it to the MAPC at their next study session. The one issue is, you know, they do want to buy their one building. You know, they want to buy this house, and I told them, you know, give me a chance to discuss this. So...
I think what we'll do is bring it at the next study session.
Okay.
I think that gives us time to give some more.
Yeah, I hate to put them in a bind during time sessions.
But, but please give me your, your thoughts.
Yeah. Okay. All right. We're, during the roll call, I failed to mention that one of the commissioners is missing, so I want to make sure you had that roll call. Okay. That said, we'll, we're going to be adjourned. We'll meet upstairs at 6:30.
Thank you for watching the Enid City Commission Study Session. All meetings are broadcast on local cable Channel 12 and in high-definition on Channel 112. In addition, the study session is live-streamed on the web at enidtv.org. If you have any questions or comments regarding this broadcast, please visit the City of Enid website at enid.org.